Item seven, comments from council members. Item A, so we'll start with Linda as we go to the item and then she can go into her comments and then we'll go around the room for anybody else's. Linda Mason requests for a resolution on behalf of the city of San Bruno, that the San Bruno City Council acknowledged that October is National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month and stands against bullying, including cyberbullying that includes sharing information about someone else causing embarrassment or humiliation, as well as sending, posting, or sharing negative, harmful, false, or mean content about someone else. Councilmember Mason.
Great, thank you. So I've kind of tweaked this a little bit based on what we're hearing tonight. But bullying is to seek harm, intimidate, or curse another. Cyberbullying is bullying that takes place over digital devices such as cell phones, computers, and tablets, which includes but is not limited to SMS and text messages, social media forums, online gambling, and any other app that allows people to view, participate, and share content. Overall, 36.5% of people feel they've been cyberbullied in their lifetime, and 17.4% have reported it has happened at some point in the last 30 days. These numbers are more than double what they were in 2007 and both represent an increase from 2018 to 2019, suggesting that we are heading in the wrong direction when it comes to cyberbullying. 87% of young people have seen cyberbullying occurring online. According to the Pew Research Center, 95% of teens are connected to the internet and 85% are social media users. And I would gamble that it may be safe to say that the number is closer to 100% post-COVID. In the U.S., 40% of adults have personally experienced some form of online harassment and 75% of adults have seen cyberbullying occurring around them. Where are people cyberbullied? Twitter, 9%, YouTube, 10%, WhatsApp, 12%, Snapchat, 31%, Facebook, 37%, and Instagram, 42%. Ditch the label further found that 69% of people report having done something abusive towards others online, while only 15% of people admit to having cyberbullied someone else online. These statistics are troubling, according to this article, because it suggests a general misunderstanding of exactly what cyberbullying is. More specifically, it's likely these people who have admitted to doing something abusive towards others online actually engaged in cyberbullying themselves, but because of lack of awareness as to what it is, they don't admit it. I asked that this item be agendized tonight because I had enough, and I hope we all agree tonight that we've all had enough. As I researched National Bullying Month, 95% of what I found was around how to help our youth and young children from being bullied. There were tips for schools and PTAs and youth programs. However, we've encountered here in San Bruno, and what's been really eye-opening is that in our world of social media, bullying does come in all shapes, sizes, and ages. Last year, I was asked about social media, and my thoughts about it to use for public officials were to communicate. My response then, as it is now, is that we have to meet people where they are. The reality is that San Bruno-specific platforms, when combined, have thousands of San Bruno residents visiting them for various reasons. Some visit for information, some visit to post their thoughts, some visit to relieve their boredom, and let's be honest, some visit for pure gossip. To post on any page could not possibly condone every comment made, every administrator, every moderator. What it does support is that even those residents that support any of these social media platforms, even they have a voice. I don't believe any of us condone bullying or support it. Provided this is an election year and we are at the last few weeks of the election, there's no better time nor any reason we should not be able to unite and agree to celebrate National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month for the first time in San Bruno. These are usually combined with activities, but provided COVID-19, a resolution would be a start for a city along with some social media posts with resources around bullying awareness. What better time than now to approve a resolution uniting against bullying and more timely cyberbullying? So I'm asking my colleagues to support this resolution that I would be happy to either draft or we can have staff assist with the drafting of a resolution. However, my colleagues would like to proceed, would be great. Thank you, everyone.
First, a member from the public and with the late hour, I want to give that opportunity in case, you know, they need to do other things. Can we please bring in Mr. Merzney and if there's anybody else, bring them in.
Okay, Ryan Merzney, just one moment. Hi, Ryan. Can you hear us?
Yes, hi, thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. So recently, I've been accused of falsely making claims online on Facebook and Nextdoor.com, and yet nobody can actually claim what I've said is inaccurate as part of bullying towards me. A council member, Laura Davis, has on several platforms accused me of hiding under an alias because I use the name Alan Ryan on Facebook. I prefer not to engage with people I knew 20 years ago and find out what their cat was doing. On Nextdoor.com, I am Ryan Merzney. Laura Davis knows this very well and yet has continued to bully me. Now, let me put this as an example to you. Laura Davis has been to my house for drinks. We've been out for drinks. Excuse my yawn. I know her house. I've spoken to her in front of it many times. She has my phone number, I have her phone number, we've spoken on the phone. And yet she pretends like I'm some alien from another planet as part of her bullying program towards me. I would ask that Michael Salazar confront me personally online when I raise questions about his job performance and not have his wife or his son bully me. If I have said anything that is a lie, please confront me on that lie and not just call me mean and a bully. Facts are facts. I am not calling any person a bad name. I am not calling any person or judging or I'm not questioning anybody's personal character. I'm judging their job performance and only their job performance. So bullying goes both ways, and I would ask our elected officials to stop bullying me. Thank you very much. Oh, also, I want to say one thing. Everything I say, I say for myself. I am not saying for Linda Mason. I'm not speaking for Linda Mason. I am not speaking for Stephen Seymour. I am not speaking for Tom Hamilton. I am speaking for Ryan Merzney. Thank you very much.
For the comments, is there anybody else from the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Because once I go away from the audience, we're going to close that portion off and we're going to keep it with the council. So this is the last call for anybody who is still with us at 11:45 at night wishes to speak on this item. Seeing no hands coming up, we'll bring it back to the city council. The councilmember Mason has asked the question in regards to potential resolution. There were a lot of items within there. Is there any comments? Comments or thoughts? Keep it in mind what the topic is about.
I'll make a comment. I wanted to make a comment earlier tonight, but didn't get an opportunity to do so, so I think I'll do that now. You know, it's actually really sad. I will say for staff who's listening and anybody who's listening, my first years on council was nothing like this. It actually all started last year when I think a campaign, a council campaign, started being really negative. I think, as we all witnessed tonight, that social media is really a very toxic place, right? And as many councilmembers, in fact, even Mayor Medina tries to stay off of it because he knows how toxic it is and he's been on the council for many years. But it's difficult because as a council member, you need to monitor different sites because what you try to do is hear what the public is seeing and saying without being able to respond. Because when you respond, somebody wants to respond again, and before you know it, you find yourself going down a slippery slope and there's really no, it's not a win-win situation. However, you know, I started speaking on behalf of cannabis dispensaries and defended it and didn't think that the staff had the bandwidth at the time to go down that process during a COVID pandemic. And to this day, I still believe in that. But we did, and thank you to those who worked tirelessly to get to this point where we now have that coming up on the ballot. But at that time, I started to get a lot of negative comments on social media. Comments that my mom reads, comments that my husband reads, comments my kids read. There was some days, I can tell you that there were a lot of upset people. And it's not fair because it wasn't your names out there that were being mentioned, it was mine. But what's more hurtful is that nobody defended me on this team. We defended me publicly during these comments, but you have friends out there and you have supporters out there and a lot of San Bruno Now supporters that actually just laughed and encouraged it. Stephen Seymour went on tonight and said that it was a comment to the side, well, this particular person who continued to badger me and call out my character with false accusations for the last few months. It was all over. It was a talk of the town. Who is this woman? What have you done? I don't know who she is. She went to school with my daughter a few years apart. I know a lot of people have made comments about her, but I don't know who she is. And so sad. So I finally, after a few months, just got tired of it and actually called her out and said, you can't do that. You can't do this and not, and delete people's comments that support me. So I'm going to put it on my page and ask you to stay positive. Ask you to think about the people you do support and stay positive with what they have to say. And thank you to the so many people who actually reached out either by phone calls, by email, people I actually went to high school with that came to my support and defended my character because I do take that into consideration. I do want to be a good person. I'm not doing this and I'm not part of the city council because it's something that I have to do, it's something that I want to do. And I always wanted to give back and help our community. In fact, all of our community, not just one part of town, our entire town. And so when a resident wants to call me out and I want to be able to defend myself, as one of the last callers tonight said that I was wrong for doing that, I'm sorry. I think I have the opportunity to at least defend myself sometimes. Although it's not something I encourage, I encourage councilmembers to do is simply comment. There's been a lot of comments that frankly are, I don't agree with. I don't agree with whether they're a friend or whether they're not a friend. Ryan Merzney just calling in. I met Ryan Merzney, invited us to a house after one of our council meetings. I didn't know him. Seemed like a very nice gentleman, but honestly, I've been bothered by Ryan Merzney for the last year. When I have friends who find him taking photos of their homes or taking photos of their kids and continue comments, he continues to say that Mayor Medina has done nothing for the city. And yet our council has done a lot for the city. We've accomplished so much as a council. And it's not one person, one member of this council that either doesn't do anything or does do something. You know, we've all experienced it at one time or another, cyberbullying. And it's just frankly not okay. But we have to encourage our teams, our campaign teams that are out there that are calling all of us or any one of us in a negative way. It doesn't do any good. It's a constantly, the half is, the glass is half empty instead of half full. We have a choice to not join social media, but we have to stay connected. Time and time again, probably one of the most common themes is, where is council? And they're not doing this and they're doing this. And if I didn't pay attention to what was being said on Nextdoor, maybe I wouldn't really have all the truth. And we have to remember too is that social media is a very small percentage of our residents. It doesn't define what our residents' opinions are, and I try to tell that to a lot of people. In fact, actually getting out and walking and campaigning this season to support other friends has been an eye-opener because it just encourages me that there are good people in this world who do see what's going on. And although they want to contradict, you know, and defend one of their friends, they see through it. They see that, you know, a group of San Bruno Now folks who I think really started out to be a really good and positive thing in San Bruno, got so big and powerful and became very negative on social media. In fact, many people, a woman who called in tonight, Claire, started her own page so that people can be, speak honest and can make comments without getting badgered. You know, you shouldn't just have to feel like you can go on to talk about a city issue and have an opinion about a city issue and be afraid of the comments. There are people today that are afraid of putting their lawn signs out in front of somebody's home because Ryan goes around and takes pictures of your home with your lawn signs. So what kind of backlash are we going to get? It's a very sad situation. And so I kind of chuckle, Linda, when you come out with this bullying thing because you're part of it. You know, you're a big part of San Bruno Now, and we all know that. And so I say, let's all go back to our core and our friends and our people and knock it off. And let's all be positive. Let's stop the negative comments ourselves and be leaders. I can't actually wait to delete my social media because when I am no longer a council member, I don't need a monitor next door. It's actually really hurtful, and we've been dealing with it for a few years now, and it's just gotten so bad. You know, we all make comments, and if we make a comment that's untruthful because maybe we don't have all the facts, it's tough because you get badgered for what you might say. Linda, you said that, you know, and I did hear, you made a comment about not having a council and a San Bruno School Board Subcommittee, which we've had for years. But maybe how it was taken, it was out of context or how you meant it, it was interpreted differently. So it's, you know, it shouldn't be, you should be badgered for it. It's just simply a thing you're trying to do and improve. And I think all of us have that intention here. All of us want to actually be a better city. We need to stop for a moment and think about all the great things we've done, and maybe we can focus on those. And if you're running for council or if you're currently a council member, stay high, stay positive. Talk about the things that you can do and things you can make better for San Bruno. I feel bad for the social media. I feel bad for these kids. I feel bad for the teenagers who are suffering from bullying, the teenagers who don't have the fear of being able to go out and be wrong amongst people because of what has been said for them. Those are my comments.
Other councilmen, other councilmembers wanting to respond to the resolution or other comments on the matter? Anything from Councilmember Medina?
Yes.
Please, sir.
I'm unmuted. Good. Yeah, absolutely in favor of people not bullying. It's a terrible thing and it's so much easier in today's world. Back when I was growing up, somebody bullied you, you probably got in a little fight. And now you're not supposed to fight, but here we are having adults on social media getting behind a keyboard, saying the meanest vilest things safely behind their computer. And when we're in the social, I mean, when we're in the public eye as elected, and especially during controversial votes, whether it be cannabis, Mills Park, I had some people write some vile things who I thought were my friends. I didn't respond. I felt like I should have, but it just prolongs it, right? And they think they get, they get the power out of your response so they can come back and attack you again. But those, they'll get there someday. That's how I look at karma, right? That's how I look at it, and it's terrible. I think somebody, somebody, somebody posted and it might have been even the same person that made some other comments about Laura, said that the council doesn't care. And I was just like, you don't know me. So I'm a member of San Bruno Now Discussion Group. I reach out to my community to hear what's going on. I don't agree with the negative. 90-plus percent of the people that I deal with, that I read comments about, 90, probably there's a handful of people that go to that level of posting mean things. And it just gets even worse when there's an election from last year, an election this year, and this is a presidential election. So I think this is a really interesting time and people feel frustrated in their own lives to have to strike out at others. So for the topic as it is, I'm in favor of this, this anti-bullying. What's it going to achieve? It's all up to us. I have some guy that's really upset with me for some reason, but I might go and give him a response. And he could, he could wither away, you know? Those comments can stay there, but they know who they are. And one day, if you believe in karma or judgment, that's somebody else to decide, not me. So, but I am in favor of this anti-bullying. I'd never even heard about it. I looked it up and it's, I guess, a national thing now. So we have San Bruno Stands Against Hate. I think that's next month. And then we have Anti-Bullying this month. And they're good concepts, you know, they sound good, but you got to live it. You got to be an example. I try to keep that in mind, not only as a council member, but as a father. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Mr. Salazar.
You know, it's, it's a really interesting conversation and especially in light of all the comments we heard at the very beginning of this meeting. And, you know, Laura, I was listening to your comments and I think you just hit the nail on the head. I mean, there's, there's so much ugliness out there, definitely not what we signed up for. And it's especially hurtful when we put ourselves out there to try to be better public servants, try to provide information, try to make ourselves accessible, and all we get is, you know, become the targets of this hate. Now, this person get on this call on our meeting and try to goad me on into engaging him because I chose to ignore him. And Marty, you know, I think you're sincere in what you're saying, but honestly, you and Ryan Merzney were going around accusing the council of taking kickbacks from the hotel. And, you know, and then you joined the council and it's like, okay, so now let's all get along. But honestly, you know, those words, they, you know, people remember the things that you say. And, you know, I haven't forgotten that you were part of that. And I know it was, it was Ryan and you never said it yourself, but both of you would show up at every forum, you would sit right next to each other and you would let him make those claims. And so for him now to say, it's, this is just me, it's not the people I associate with, it's hard to distance that, especially knowing his connection to you and to the other candidates. It's very disingenuous. And for him to say that my family shouldn't be commenting, well, they chose to engage. I don't get into that. They felt the need to defend the people that they know and trust and believe in, and that's their prerogative to do it. They shouldn't be, you know, chased away or denied. Their opinion is just as important as anyone's. So it's hard for me to rally behind this, just knowing all the politics that goes into this. And you're right, what does it change? Whose behavior are we hoping to change by doing this? And, you know, this really is something that's intended for young people, for teenagers. And there is an epidemic of bullying among them. And for a lot of them, it ends up in suicide because it becomes so bad. We're grown adults and for us, we should be able to police ourselves. And if we're not doing that, a resolution is not going to change that. And it's, you know, it's, we keep going down the same thing. It's like, let's, let's say this is how it should be, and those of us that have always followed the rules will continue to follow the rules, and those that choose not to will continue not to. So, you know, to me, this just sounds like a political stunt and especially with all I'm hearing from, from the public, I, it just, it's hard to feel good about this because it's supposed to be something that we feel good about and it's something that's important, but just the way it's coming across, it just doesn't feel good to me.
If I may, you know, I've heard a lot of, and this is part of the issue.
Hold on, hold on, please.
Okay.
I want to make sure Mr. Salazar, I want to make sure first device in there is included. I haven't spoken yet, but what I do want to acknowledge is, and I know I've said, nobody else from the public, I do see a hand up. It is now Wednesday morning, and I'm wanting to give this person the opportunity because they've held on since 7 o'clock tonight into the next morning. And so unless I have any objection, I'm going to allow one more person to speak, and then I'm truly cutting this off. But I want to be gracious for anyone who has been here this long and feels important about this. Seeing nobody stopping me? Okay, no, I'm letting the one person in, and that was it because they've had their hand up for a while. I was going to bypass it, but I'm not going to, letting it open up. So, no, I guess that's not fair, but folks, I don't want to keep having hands go up.
Well, if they spoke on the, is it on the same issue that they spoke on earlier? Because a number of people spoke on this issue.
Correct, but it's in regards to the resolution. Others, others that I was writing down the comments.
Oh, through the chair, just to clarify. So this, the resident I think you're speaking of did email council yesterday, and I followed up with a phone call to her because I don't know, but I think she has some good information in terms of a job that she had with her kids or with kids up at Crestmore High School. And I think that she really hit home about the whole bullying thing. And I thought she was the one who sort of instigated us adding this to the agenda.
I'm going to ask my colleagues again, but I want to go back to Councilmember Mason because you were asking a question about whether to let the person speak.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm fine with whether you open up for public comment or not. I'm just saying that if it's on the same topic that was, you know, a number of people spoke during general comment on this topic. So that's all I'm saying.
The speaker is acting up on me. Okay, and Melissa, and I apologize, it's just getting late. Melissa, can you please let the speaker in? And then we're going to bring it to council and then decide.
Okay, Claire Luna?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, whenever you're ready.
Great, so I actually used to work at Peninsula High School for about, well, I worked with the San Francisco Union High School District for about five or so years. And I worked with, in Peninsula, I worked with students who had depression and anxiety, and they literally couldn't go to school. So they were, they were so scared to go to school that this program was initiated, and it's a real thing. So when people say, you're bullying me or I'm bullying you, everybody has their own definition of bullying, and it's not to say, bullying is not, I'm going to use profanity or I'm going to use force. Bully comes in all different sorts of ways, and I do not participate in social media whatsoever. But other, I looked up something on social media and a couple, you know, like a month ago, and I was really shocked because this is devastating for teenagers. And when I went onto a website looking for information about San Bruno, I saw what I witnessed these teenagers going through, and it's valid. It happens in, it happens with adults, and it's completely unfair. And I was just completely shocked. And then I saw, what the funny thing is, and I did this myself that moment, but I saw screenshots. And screenshots are devastating for teenagers. Like, I don't know how many times I saw a screenshot here, a screenshot there, and it started so many arguments with teenagers and fights. And then I was just shocked that we were doing it as adults. Like, I was just completely just appalled because we should be doing better. And to see council members who volunteer their time, like people, you guys have full-time jobs or you did, most of you do, and you guys volunteer time, like volunteers really, really mean a lot to me. And to have them attacked, uh, when they're trying to do things better for the city and then watching other council members still comment on these, you know, come on these sites, it's really hurtful. And throughout this, I, I feel so passionate about this that I had to make my own group because these people were messaging me and telling me that they were afraid and they're afraid to speak now. So that's why I'm here, that's why I stayed up for five hours, because these people are really scared and it's created by, by this negativity. Because once people have power, some, you know, they, they might not know it, but it gets, it, it gives them power and then they treat other people unfairly. And it's happened to a lot of residents in San Bruno and I hope that you guys do take this seriously, especially the members who are associated with that website and post frequently. You might not know it, other people have definitions of bullying and it's not fair for anybody. Please stick up, please lead the example because we're looking at you guys to lead the example. So where to start? Start with you guys first, please, because you guys are in a higher position and you guys should be leading by example. Thank you so much for taking my call this time.
Thank you.
Um, for bringing the perspective of the young people because as we said, when you look it up, it is, uh, directly about the young people, they're greatly affected that leads to tragedies many times. And I apologize, Councilmember Mason, you had, you had the floor next.
No, I, I just wanted to say, I think, um, I heard comments from both, uh, Councilmember Davis and Salazar in particular, Councilmember Salazar saying, you know, because some of us follow the rules. I think those kinds of comments are quite damaging. They're very general. Um, they don't point to when the rules weren't followed by Mr. Medina or myself. They don't point to, um, they're, in my opinion, actually a lot of what both of you said, um, is broad, it's this broad scope. To say that prior to a campaign last year, San Bruno was perfectly happy, you know, San Mateo Avenue was bustling. You go the east side and everybody's smiling with their glass of champagne on their front store, you know, stairs. That's just not the reality. And you go to different platforms and there's different opinions on each platform. And all you're doing is trying to say, this is what's going on tonight. Tonight is a walk in the street, that we're closing the streets tonight. Because you use a platform, because you associate, by the, which by the way, everybody on this council is affiliated with San Bruno now, everybody here is a member. Nobody here has stepped in to, to validate myself or Mr. Medina or Ms. Salazar or Ms. Davis or, you know, Mr. Medina on any of these sites that I have seen, except for, you know, one, and it wasn't even a site, it was a personal page. So if you, if, you know, and in addition to that, I wanna say that the reason I put bullying, not just cyberbullying, is because there's a lot of backdoor conversations that also happen amongst certain groups that are associated with yourselves that are not telling the truth about any of us. And I've heard them when I've gone door to door and I've heard them that they came from specific mouths that are associated with, with some of you. And so what I'm saying tonight is that this is not disingenuous. You've seen my posts. Point to a post and tell me which one's wrong, which one's right, which one's wrong. Point to a like that I have, which is right and which is wrong. But the goal is to get to as many residents as we can using the media and the platforms that we have. Prior to COVID, the city didn't even have a Facebook page. And to make these illusions that this has been going on for years or this has been some buildup, I'm not part of that. And I don't appreciate those comments because it's just not true and it continues to lead into this false narrative that everybody here is guilty of. And I don't wanna be part of it. I'm sick of it. I've had enough. This week was enough. My family's on social media as well. You're not the only one, Councilmember Davis. So when I agendize this, I agendize this because all of us have to agree as the leadership of this community that this is unacceptable. And if you don't wanna support it, you speak with your vote. But it's important that at this moment, based on what we have all witnessed and experienced in the last couple of months, that we unite and we say, this is not enough. This is not good enough for our city. Cause I'm tired of it and I'm tired of having to worry about what I'm gonna open the page up to. Do I have to defend myself to this private message, to that private message? Because just because they don't post it, doesn't mean I'm not getting the messages from people you're aligned with as well.
And, and so much for us using generalities because that was very general and very vague as well. Uh, why don't you vote with your actions instead of us voting with, with, with some resolution?
I am, the actions tonight. We, we vote as a council.
All right, so let's bring it to me. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a little candid and I'm, you know, this is a topic that's very sincere and I understand it because it's next month and it's the anti-bullying. Um, it's asking just for a resolution with a lot of detail, but in all sincerity with it being at almost 12:15 in the morning. And it has really been, uh, from the moment we started this meeting under public comment to now, um, I don't know that this council doesn't need to, we all need to take a breath and reflect inside and reflect what, what is the absolute goal? I mean, honestly, there are resources that are, that I'm sure Facebook or Nextdoor has, those are the important resources that maybe we need to get out. And I'm sure they've done the research, I'm sure they've done the homework, I'm sure they've been compelled to do so. And I think that's what we're trying to do is communicate and educate. I think we're trying to protect our youth. Because obviously if the youth had watched tonight, I don't know that, that they'd see an example because it's gotten a little personal, it's gotten into people's families and obviously we're human. So the true emotion has come out. And no one likes to be attacked. Um, for everyone to say, you gotta have a tough skin, yeah, that's true. We can be called names and we have little recourse. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't take away, um, the field. Everybody here that I'm looking at did not run for office and is not serving today because they're looking for riches and glory. I know that. But at the same time too, we don't have to have a 5-0 vote. But I think what I have always heard is that a council can have a disagreement, have a vote, they get off the dais and they move on. And they've been professional and then they work together on the next thing. And I think the community has enjoyed that because it has not always been the time. Go back decades when the meetings were very contentious, would end in quite a display. And people wanna change because of the fact, it's like, we wanna respect our council, we don't want them fighting to where it embarrasses the community or from outsiders looking in. So, you know, I, I think the intent is, is right and I think everybody here does not agree with the bullying. I don't think anybody would, would disagree with that. I think that there's a nerve that's been hit, it's a little raw, and I don't know if we're gonna be moving in the direction that we should. Um, in all honesty, and I'm looking at this, um, prevent awareness, there's, there's a lot of elements. I know that there's probably proclamations or there's probably stuff, I saw something online that even you can ask the governor to send in something, um, to actually make it more, um, acknowledged. You know, I know May 4th of two twenty, uh, 2021 is the National Bullying Day, you know, so I'm rambling a little bit now, but I, I, I just, in listening and sitting back and, and watching, I just, you know, I think we're all in a unique frame of mind that I haven't seen. Um, and it's unfortunate, um, but maybe a little honesty doesn't hurt either, but, um, anyway, I'll, I'll stop right there for, for now. Thanks for letting me ramble at this hour.
That was well said, Mayor. Thank you.
It is 12:15, so your excuse, I think.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so with that said, um, you know, Councilmember Mason, I understand what the rationale is. Um, and I know it's always about a vote and it's, it's an up and a down and, and have you on the record, have us on the record or have you on the record. And so I'd like to see us maybe get into more collective about, like you said, collaboration, a, you know, we're all, we're all in it to win it and we're all doing it for the right reasons and with sincerity in our heart and our soul and with a clear thought of conscious, uh, for what we're trying to do, which is right. Um, I really believe the youth are the ones that get affected horribly. And again, when I was growing up, yeah, I'm not young anymore, you know, we didn't have all of this element. It was probably an easier time. Gosh, we didn't have cell phones when I was growing up either. So, you know, look at how, how times have evolved. But I worry about the youth primarily. And, and I always still believe a resolution is something that comes up, it takes an action and then it gets archived. And, and I, and I would just like to see us trying to push out the, uh, the city media resources of where people can call, when people are feeling like they wanna commit suicide, when people have nowhere else to turn. Where, what can we do for them? How can we help save them or direct them? Cause sometimes they always can't do it at home and that's what I worry about more. I know as us as adults, we're gonna have to step it up and we're gonna have to, uh, you know, we, we know what's right and wrong, we just gotta lead by example, but I worry mostly about the youth.
That's part of awareness, to share those kinds of resources throughout the month.
But it's also, what is the expectation for staff to do other than bring back a resolution with some words? And I'm, I'm not trying to be, you know, hurt about it, I'm just trying to be candid, like you said, put messages out, put this out, okay? Because I also look down the path and I'm go, you know, there are dozens and dozens of resolutions, proclamations, um, things, and I'm, I'm worried about staff too. This happens to be in today's moment, but November, like you said, is, is the anti-hate. December could be this, January. So I, I just also wanna know really what we're trying to accomplish as far as you said, resources and giving that communication and who's doing that?
Yeah, I think.
Please.
You're asking me the question. The goal was for the council to really symbolically align behind this and not say no because Linda brought it forth, but to actually say, we really can unite behind something that is, um, a true action that the council, um, we can write it together, we can work on it together, we can agree on what will be shared on social media about it. Um, but I just think that given where we are right now and how divided we are, I think that this is a really great exercise that we can do together. Um, and I feel right now that the only reason that it is not being supported is because I'm bringing it forth and I think that's unfortunate. I really thought this was an opportunity to work together, um, given where we are right now.
Well, and I also saw is when we worked, uh, together, when we had the statement that I asked each one of us to read, which is uncharacteristic, usually the mayor will say, I'll, I'll read it. And I'd offered it to all of us and you know what that, when, when I'm referencing that. And so, um, we did work collaboratively and thanks, you know, for all your work you were doing, Linda, you know, get various versions to us and coming up, but we all shared in that. And so, you know, that's, if we're gonna do something, let's do it in that vein and not in the vein just to do it because it's politics or because it's, I, I, I want it, I want us to have it in our heart and soul that this is what we're doing as a team. Not because we're doing it and it's, you know, when I make a decision, I, I don't, you know, I may, you may not think this, I mean, we don't know each other, uh, well enough, but it's not personal when I do those things. I can, I can separate myself, um, and, you know, it's what's, what's best for all of us. But I always wanna say, let's do it when we're in the right frame. And I also wanna say, let's do it when our intentions are, are pure. That's just me.
Yeah. And this is not political and this is my first October being on the council. So, thank you. I, I do, I would like to have though an official, it sounds, I mean, I'd like everyone to, to be clear on whether to move forward or not.
And that is why you brought it up was to see if there was, uh, consensus to, um, have direct staff to put in a, a resolution and bring that forward, which actually would not be until October. So we'd already be in the month now that I'm just thinking about it. Took me a minute. Um, so is there a support? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Davis, you had your virtual hand, I apologize.
I think I mentioned this to Mayor Medina last year when you brought in, um, the San Bruno cares and you, I forget what month it was. And I, and I kinda said to you at the time and I had the same comment today, but what does that mean? So we sign a proclamation, what does it mean? What are we committing to tonight? Um, and so I always feel like things get brought to this agenda for us to make a decision with not all the facts. So for just to commit to signing a proclamation, okay, I'll sign a proclamation, but that's not enough for me. If we want to make a difference, then I think there needs to be more to it. And I think that that's what should have been brought forward tonight in saying, I wanna bring this proclamation and I want, I'd like to, and I've already discussed it with staff, uh, about the opportunities or things we can do. And staff's given us the okay that it's a very small amount of time to put that effort toward doing X, Y, Z. Or it's gonna be, we don't have the bandwidth for this, or it's gonna take away from something else. So I guess I don't know what I'm saying yes to.
Let me ask council, because I, I'm understanding because we're asking staff to do something and we don't know what the level is, we don't know the, it's kinda detailed in that. Let me ask the council a question. If we were to do, which I know there's on the website, we did a proclamation, but in this proclamation, we all signed it, not just the mayor, uh, which is easy for the city clerk's office to do, that just acknowledges the, uh, October is that, as we just did Fire Awareness Week, right, 4th through the 10th, I believe. Uh, I think that is what we're, I think maybe Councilmember Mason, it's about saying that we don't incur to it, obviously we're against it. Uh, each one of the council members, I'm more than happy to have them sign this proclamation. City Clerk's Office usually facilitates that, they can go into National Bullying, uh, and find something, therefore it's nominal to staff's time, we're not asking extra, but it is sending a message that can be articulated at next, uh, meeting. What are the thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, if it gets us all to.
Because I, I think what I'm hearing from Councilmember Davis is just like, yeah, no, because we do the wherethes, as you know, and, and that. And, and so, you know, I think that's something that minimizes staff's work. It, it acknowledges the month that it is, uh, as we do for other significance, you know, cancer and, and other things, suffrage, et cetera. Um, and usually I think that's the normal protocol too, is, uh, the proclamation because of that, because it's a lot of detail in a resolution. So that's my suggestion and, and I'll open it up to my colleagues if they're, if that's something they're amenable to.
Mr. Mayor, that sounds absolutely fine. I think we, we showed through the statement on George Floyd that, uh, we could work together. So I don't see a problem with this, so I, I'm in agreement with that. Minimize the amount of staff time if, if, if at all, they don't need to do anything. We write it all up, send it around and done.
And honestly, there's probably something already online. I know there's one for the governor. So, uh, if they got one for the governor, I'm sure they have one for the city. Right? Um, uh, Councilmember Davis and Vice Mayor Salazar, thoughts?
Yeah, and then, you know, maybe if it's something that comes up again next year, we can do more and we're in a different time and we can really think through this process and, you know, maybe council can jump on it two months ahead of time and figure out what we can plan and prepare for. So, I mean, I, I mean, at the end of the day, folks, this is not about us, it's really about the residents, it's about these young kids. So whatever we can do to maybe, as somebody said earlier, is we've gotta be the leaders, so.
I, I agree, I agree. And it's gotta start with us. So, so Linda, I, I apologize, I know I got a little emotional there and I, I do apologize. I've known you for a long time, I've known Andy for a long time and Marty, same with you. I know, you know, sometimes emotions flare, we've known each other a long time. And, um, you know, last thing I want is, is bad blood. We, we gotta work together, you know, here and, and, um, you know, I, I, I agree, we, we need to be bigger than this and, um, and, and I'll, I'll support it.
So we've gone from, one, just like I said before, we're gonna, in this meeting tonight and we're all gonna, I'm gonna say walk off the dais, but we're not together. So we're all gonna go into other rooms of wherever we're at and, um, and on a collective note. And, and I appreciate that. Um, and, and thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you to everybody else because, um, you know, and I'll say it to anybody here and away from here, nobody that sits on. Nobody that sits on this council in my heart and in my mind has nothing but the good intentions. Though we may not be a 5-0, we are a 5-0 when it comes to this city and trying to do what's best and moving it forward and representing the residents that put us here. And it has given us that privilege. I never doubt that for a moment. I think this is an example by us doing this, uh, together and we'll, we'll work on that. So with that said, um, let's go now to council comments at, uh, 11:30 in the morning. Uh, Councilmember Mason, did you have anything else?
Oh, um, I wanted to thank Keith DiMartini. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you, if he's still here. He really was helpful when I first started going through the entire budget with me. And so I wish you much luck. And then I wanted just to shout out to J.C. Bruno. J.C. Bruno had an awesome Mexican Independence Day dinner. And for anybody who hasn't had a chance to go down there, they've been having some nice events lately and just a great, um, just a great ambiance. And then just lastly, I know that the eviction moratorium was just extended. I mentioned this at the last meeting, but just if we could get an update at some point around the commercial moratorium in San Bruno. Um, and I guess what staff recommends and what the next steps are. That could be via email or at the next meeting. But that was one of the questions that came up from one of the small business owners. So thank you and good luck, Keith.
Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, it's, um, Thursday is the, uh, fourth Thursday of the month. And that means, uh, that there will be a grocery distribution at Bel Air School at 450 Third Avenue from 2:45 to 4:15, provided by, uh, Second Harvest at Silicon Valley with plenty of volunteers. If you know somebody that needs food, uh, 1-800-984-3663. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
And, and to follow up on, on Marty's, um, announcement about the food distribution. Anybody who's bilingual, if, if you speak Spanish, uh, there, there's a need for Spanish-speaking, uh, folks to help volunteer. I was down there for, for the last one and spent the entire time registering people. And, uh, definitely, uh, speaking Spanish was, was a big advantage, so. And I also wanted to give my thanks to, to Keith for what he's done for us. He's definitely elevated what we do with finance. He was a huge, huge asset to the city. He will be very much missed. And, um, I, I want to add my voice to those wishing him the best of luck in his next adventure. And, um, we'll, we'll be watching you and expecting great things from you. Thank you, Keith. I also wanted to, uh, one, one other thing. When I was looking online, I saw a suggestion that somebody had about, um, the council organizing, uh, walkthroughs of downtown to sort of get a first, you know, hand look at everything that's going on. And, uh, I know when we were on, on Parks and Rec, uh, we had a similar program there where we would inspect parks on a regular basis. And I, I can't remember if we decided to change to doing it individually because of Brown Act concerns or, um, and so I wanted to throw that out to staff. If it's something that, that council wanted to do, would it be something that we would have to agendize? And would, would it be possible for us to do something like that as, as a, as a council?
Um, council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, is that, are you concluded?
That, that was my last call. Yeah, and, and I can, I can get that, uh, answer to that question offline.
Councilmember Davis?
Keith DiMartini, oh, it is sad to see you leaving. Not only, um, not going to be around in this area, but as a employee with San Bruno. Known your family for many years, love, 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 love your mom. And, uh, got to know you as a little boy and as a grown man and someone that I highly respected. I cannot tell you what a loss it is to the city to see you moving on. We have a standard for presentations, the, um, succinctness of them. They're, they're, as, as Michael Salazar, Councilmember Salazar said earlier tonight, you get straight to the point, you give us all the facts, you summarize it up, you give us all the details. I refer to many of those so often. I, I, I can just feel confident in, in the information that you're giving me as much as sometimes it, it could be over somebody's head, but you do it so well. You know, you've made a lot of changes and impact to the city. A lot of the, you know, the Measure G, um, meetings that you went out and the presentations you did, did along with City Manager Jovan Grogan. Fabulous. You know, you addressed the internal issues first before we ever started to think about going out to the public. So cleaning up our own house and improving our processes and ensuring that we're collecting on, on aged debt and, and all those things that you did to, you know, contracts that needed to get signed and, and, um, you know, merging all sorts of, of services we have into one contract to save money. So thank you for everything you've done, um, the awards that we've gotten. And I just, I say, I say to Jovan, good luck. You will need it and, and you will be hugely missed, uh, Keith. So thank you so much.
For me, uh, finishing out, I will say there was, that we have had a walking tour before on San Antonio Avenue and, uh, it was just agendized before we all could be there and talk, you know. And then we could stop off in a certain, you know, shop, coffee or dessert or something. I, also to Mr. Di, DiMartini, Director DiMartini, there is, um, first of all, not many study sessions get moved up because somebody is departing. And so you may, you may have made history, uh, but as you should because you already have. You know, uh, I am, I feel that this city, um, and our community have been blessed to have you in City Hall the time that you are. I know the move and the transition. And again, you're not just leaving the area, I mean, meaning another job, you're leaving the area with your family. And I know that's difficult. A move is not easy with the kids and all, but, um, you know, I think people need to realize, too, that a lot of processes, segregations of duties, uh, checks and balances, uh, awards, an award that we had never received, um, you know, continuing an award that we had received. You also, uh, went and said, okay, let's audit things. Let's, uh, with council, you know, supporting you. And you also always remind me that we are doing a lot. And this finance department does a lot with not a lot of staff. So it's also, he'll always remind me, it's the dedication of the team that, that takes it serious and does their job. You have brought a great spirit, uh, great determination, uh, great energy, uh, to this team, to this department, to the senior leadership. And you're always able to make it easy for us to understand. And we, and I've heard the rumor that people might start to miss your PowerPoint presentations, um, but with your talent and finesse. So really, uh, from seeing and dealing, I mean, you even changed the budget process. And I know when we talked and it was like, Rico, can we try a different budget? Because the rumor was that I was like this very strict person when it came to how the budget has to be done. And Keith was just amazed that I said, sure, let's try it. If we don't like it, we'll go back to the old way. But it was efficiency that you created and saved staff time. So really, Keith, um, on behalf of all the council, and we don't need a proclamation or a resolution for this, you have a 5-0 vote that we have been blessed and we thank you for what you have given and what you have done and what you are leaving us in, which is better hands. You, my friend, have made a difference and you are leaving things better than you found it when you walked in. Thank you. So with that, I will say, Jovan, I'm just going to say to the staff that is still on, and they're still with us, uh, they need to sleep in. Hence, uh, they should not be reporting to work, uh, not too early because it's, uh, 12:40 in the morning. So sleep in per the city council who just passed their resolution. To my colleagues, thank you. And to everyone left, good morning.